Thank you.
All right, Bob, you're good.
Okay, all set?
Yep.
Now, we've got a planning commissioner sitting out there. All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and get started. And good evening and welcome to the Planning Department's Virtual D2 Rezoning Town Hall Meeting. This is Deputy City Manager and Planning Director Bob Baldwin. And this evening, we hope to provide you with some information regarding the rezoning effort for the D2 District and hopefully provide you with information regarding your own property that you may find helpful and useful as this process moves forward. During the course of the presentation tonight, we'll provide you with a fair amount of background information, information of what's being proposed, and we'll discuss a little bit about the process we are following from this point forward. Unfortunately, you know, we can't meet in person. You know, one of those things, the Planning Department typically likes to meet with people in person. It's one of our normal things we do, but under the current COVID-19 situation, we're forced to do this virtually. Hopefully, this will still work out and provide everyone with the information that they need and ability for us to answer any questions you might have. Assisting tonight from the Planning Department, we've got Julie Chop and Meg Pittenger. And we're going to have Julie lead us off here with the basic presentation. And with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Julie, and we will get started.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us today. I'm Julie Chop, a planner with the City of Portsmouth. This presentation will give a brief overview of the proposed rezoning of the D2 area and the D2 Innovation Overlay District. Additional information, including related studies and maps, can be found on the Planning Department website at the link provided throughout this presentation. The website also includes a link for the PowerPoint, so if you would like to download it at any time, you can do so. And a recording of this presentation will also be posted on the website. Please feel free to post questions throughout the presentation in the chat box, and they will be addressed during the question and answer section of the Town Hall at the end of this presentation. In 2017, City Council directed the review and revision of the city's zoning ordinance, as well as the elimination and replacement of the D2 Form-Based Code with provisions applicable to the Uptown area of the city. The current zoning of the D2 area regulates land through a Form-Based Code. A Form-Based Code is a land development regulation that fosters predictable build results in a high-quality public realm by using physical form rather than separation of uses as the organizing principle for the code. The other areas of the city regulate land through traditional zoning, which regulates land by separation of uses. The current zoning regulations have proved to be a hindrance to reinvestment and redevelopment in the D2 area. Developers and property owners experienced difficulty with the excessive requirements for development, which required specific building materials and strict building envelope standards. The city determined that the D2 Form-Based Code was not accomplishing its intended goals and was an inappropriate tool to encourage the growth and development of the area. A land use study was commissioned in 2017 to provide recommendations on replacing the D2 with traditional zoning districts. A proposed zoning map was created based on the D2 Uptown Land Use Study, Community Engagement, and Public Review. 541 parcels and approximately 250 acres in the D2 are proposed to be zoned to traditional zoning districts as seen in the map on the slide. This Town Hall meeting is intended to provide an opportunity for property owners in the D2 to learn about the rezoning and provide comments regarding the proposed zoning district for their property. ...of the new zoning districts in the D2 area. The Overlay District is intended to facilitate growth and development in the area. Innovation Overlay District establishes additional location-specific standards based on sub-districts. The specified sub-districts include the London Boulevard Corridor, the High Street Corridor, and the County Street Corridor. So many of you may be wondering what an innovation district is. An innovation district is a place-based urban development strategy that aims to regenerate an underperforming area into a desirable location for innovative and creative companies and work. An innovation district is a platform for all kinds of activity that stimulate innovation while offering value to entities that drive the economy. Innovation districts have proven to be practical solutions for cities to modernize their economies and pivot from traditional industrial-based production to technology-driven services. More information on innovation districts is available on the Planning Department webpage. You can easily access this page by going to the city's website at www.portsmitthva.gov and search for innovation. So the next question you may be wondering is, why is the D2 Uptown area a good candidate for an innovation district? The D2 area contains a number of assets for identifying this area as an innovation district, including considerable available land for development and redevelopment, significant publicly-owned land primed for private investment, connection to the city's future fiber-optic ring providing opportunities to deploy smart city concepts, linkage to future wind energy investments projects by PMT, considerable civic activity with the behavioral health services, social services, health department buildings, and the future Hampton Roads Community Health Center headquarters. The D2 area also has locational advantages, including the area is central to Portsmouth, it is adjacent to downtown Portsmouth and Norfolk, there is direct access to the MLK to Interstate I-264 East and West and Route 164 Western Freeway. The D2 area is in close proximity to the PMT and VIG ports. There are nearby institutions, including the Naval Hospital, Maryview Hospital, Norfolk Naval Shipyard, and the Coast Guard Base. There are also neighboring academic institutions, including IC Norfolk High School, Norfolk State University, Tidewater Community College, Old Dominion University, and ODU Tri-City Center. Next, we will discuss what are the potential benefits of the D2 Innovation Overlay District. The D2 Innovation Overlay District will provide a regulatory framework for the desired redevelopment and land use options. The D2 Innovation Overlay District will give the D2 area a sense of place, an identity, and a vision for inclusive growth. The district will facilitate the ability of the city to generate accessible jobs and will contribute to economic growth by helping generate revenue. The D2 Innovation Overlay District will help to provide educational and skill-training opportunities for Portsmouth residents. All of the 541 parcels within the D2 are proposed to be rezoned to either the Urban Residential, the Neighborhood Mixed Use, General Mixed Use, or Light Industrial Zoning Districts. The following slides provide a brief description of these zoning districts. The Urban Residential, or UR, zoning district, was established to accommodate a range of residential development along with mixed-use, neighborhood-serving, commercial development, and institutional uses to encourage diverse development. The Neighborhood Mixed Use, or the NMU, zoning district, was established to accommodate a mix of residential and small-scale, low-intensity, and convenience retail and service uses that provide goods and services serving the residents of the immediately surrounding neighborhood. Continuing on, the General Mixed Use, or GMU, zoning district, was established to provide a wide variety of professional offices and institutions and a broad range of light and moderate-intensity commercial uses proximate to residential and more intense business districts so as to satisfy the demand for services. The Light Industrial, or IL, zoning district, was established and intended to accommodate light manufacturing, assembly, fabrication, processing, distribution, storage, research, and development, and other industrial uses that are small-scale. More information on these zoning districts is available on the D2 Innovation Planning Department webpage. I will now zoom in on specific areas of the D2 area and explain the proposed zoning. This slide shows a map of the area west of the MLK interchange. It includes the Portsmouth Public Utilities Building, residential areas, and vacant land available for industrial flex and office uses. This area is largely proposed for light industrial zoning. This slide shows a map showing the area around Norfolk High School, which includes the Cottage Place neighborhood. This residential area is largely proposed to be rezoned to Urban Residential, or UR. The parcels across from Norfolk High School to the south include many of the city's public institutions and are proposed for Neighborhood Mixed Use, or NMU. This map shows the High Street Corridor of the D2 area. The majority of parcels are proposed to be rezoned to Neighborhood Mixed Use. This map shows the London Street Corridor of the D2 area. This area is largely proposed to be rezoned to General Mixed Use, and, oh wait, which provides an array of development opportunities. The northwest of the area is designated for IL, parcels adjacent to the Oak Grove Cemetery. This slide shows the County Street Corridor. The area north of County Street is proposed for NMU, and south of County Street is proposed for Light Industrial. The Planning Department webpage contains a webpage dedicated to providing citizens information regarding the proposed D2 rezoning and Innovation Overlay District. The webpage can be found by going to the city's website at www.portsmitthva.gov and searching for innovation. The page contains a link to an Excel file of all the properties within the D2 and a corresponding column with the proposed zoning district. Staff recommends that each property owner assess their property with the proposed zoning district standards and allowable uses. Staff is available to help with this process. One of the primary reasons Council directed staff to replace the D2 Form-Based Code was due to the amount of nonconformities that the Form-Based Code created. Staff has proposed these changes to traditional zoning districts to minimize the number of nonconforming situations. If the existing legally-established use on your property is not permitted, or if the existing structure or lot is nonconforming in the new zoning district, property owners may continue that use, and of course, the existing structure and lot may remain. Staff has also implemented processes in the zoning ordinance rewrite to allow property owners to expand nonconforming uses, structures, and parcels. So today's staff will review the comments based on the comments from the property owners and review the proposed zoning map to see if any changes are needed. So what are the future steps? The final draft of the city's rewrite of the zoning ordinance is available for public review on the Planning Department webpage. Planning Commission has called a special virtual work session on November 5 at 10:00 a.m. to discuss the revised zoning ordinance. In the near future, the city's Planning Commission and City Council will consider the proposed rezoning of the D2 district and the newly rewritten zoning ordinance concurrently. If the proposed new zoning is adopted by City Council, the city's planning and economic development departments will jointly coordinate the development of a D2 Innovation Overlay District area master plan and a new placemaking strategy that will include extensive community participation and input. That process will tentatively commence during the late spring or summer of 2021. Please check back to the Planning Department website for updates on these efforts. We are currently in the beginning stages of this process. Staff plans to continue to engage the citizens of Portsmouth and the residents of the D2 area to help create a placemaking strategy for the Innovation Overlay District that will bring identity to the area and create an area that citizens are proud of. For the remainder of the Town Hall, staff would like to hear from you. We are happy to answer any questions and listen to comments on the proposed D2 rezoning and the D2 Innovation Overlay District. Please feel free to email me at chopj@portsmitthva.gov with any additional comments. Thank you so much for taking the time to attend this virtual meeting. And I will now turn it over to Meg Pittenger for the comments and questions portion of the Town Hall.
Thank you, Julie. This is Meg Pittenger with the Planning Department. Oh, okay. I posted, for those of you who are joined virtually on the meeting and not called in, I put a link to the Innovation District webpage, which maybe you've seen, but if you haven't, that link is in the chat. What I'm going to do first is go to the, I have two people that are on the phones. Since they cannot see the screen, what I'm going to do is call on them by their phone number, and then what I'll ask is, for the people who are joining the meeting, if you have questions or would like to comment, if you could use the raise-your-hand function in there, then I'll call on you by name as we go down. But I'm going to start with the people on the phone. Got someone, your last four digits of your phone number is 9840. If you have any questions or comments that you would like to make, if you would go ahead and unmute yourself and make those comments, if not, we'll move on to the next one.
Hi, Meg. This is Carl Jackson, just listening in.
Okay, thank you. I got somebody with the last four digits of your number is 4338. If you'd like to comment, if you could state your name and then ask your questions or state your comments if you want to comment. 4338, going once? Going twice? Okay. Anybody else who's logged into the meeting? I could go down the list alphabetically. Mr. Williams, do you have any questions or comments? And feel free, for those of you who are going to comment, to turn your cameras on if you would like. Gary, do you have any questions or comments that you would like to make? Feel free to unmute yourself. There you go.
Yes. Gary Harris, couple of questions. Almost at the end of the presentation, there was discussion of community engagement and involvement in the spring, summer of next year for further discussion. That's important in a process like this. Zoning is complex, is full of jargon, is full of stuff that's only recognized by practitioners. Mrs. Jones down the street, who's 70 years old, doesn't understand what an innovation district is, let alone D2. Describe to me what is meaningful community engagement from your perspective, once we're ready, set, go. What does that look like?
So, you know, it's going to be a variety of things. We're proposing to have a consultant come in to help us with this process and to look at, you know, hopefully, it will be post-COVID by then, but who knows? But to have, you know, a series of engagement strategies to get the public input, the property owner and surrounding property owners' input into what they want this district to look like. You know, as Julie mentioned, the rezoning and the creation of the Overlay District is just the very, very beginning. What that placemaking, what that area looks like, is going to be born out of what the people in the area want it to look like, not what, you know, staff wants it to look like, and what does that mean to the people who live and have their businesses in that area? We will not do this with just staff. I always tell people, we already know what we think. You know, we need to know what you think. And Mr. Baldwin, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, thank you, Meg. I just want to add to that. We started the initial conversations about looking at these innovation districts, which we think has a lot of application here, a lot of potential. But it's very clear when you look at innovation districts, the only way they really succeed is that they are really, you know, a citizen-based innovation district plan. So, you know, this is not, it's obviously a challenge for us under the current virtual formatting we go through, although we're getting better. We're certainly more used to working this way. We'd have to do, you know, much, much more than normal to build this innovation district. But the real concept is, and I certainly appreciate the comment, we were discussing that stat today about the issues of jargon and terminology and people, you know, not being experts in the world of zoning, and we certainly appreciate and recognize that. One of the charges we got from City Council in the rewrite of our zoning ordinance was to try to make it a little bit more user-friendly, a little bit easier and simpler to read. But, you know, we're still dealing with legal terminology, legal land use terminology. But when it comes down to the planning work, there's no reason that this isn't going to be a more normal-conversation-level planning exercise. And our goal would be to use and to approach the public in a variety of different forms and formats. And as Meg was saying, in-person would be great. We certainly love to meet with the public in-person. That's our normal default position, is to have meetings face-to-face. Obviously, now's not an opportunity for us to do that, and hopefully, at some point, we'll be able to do that. But the way we would be looking at this would be a process, and we're certainly open to comments. We'd ask anybody out there, thoughts, how they think we could, you know, build a system for public engagement that would make sense. And that can be all sorts of things, from, you know, different formats, using social media, time of day, more graphics, less jargon, you know, whatever suggestions you have that would help us communicate. But the bottom line is, this innovation overlay district's got to be built from the community outwards and not from the staff, you know, coming inwards. And that's the, I think, the great opportunity we have here, is the ability to work with the community out there and help revive the community that's really been suffering under this Form-Based Code for a decade now. And so, anyway, I just want to mention, I think that's really our intention, is to really have the property owners, the business owners and tenants, the residents, investors, anybody, you know, you can find others interested in making this place a success, be involved and engaged in a really meaningful way. As we put together the plan, and then as both Meg and Julie mentioned, a placemaking strategy to try to give, you know, this community and this area some real identity, that people recognize what you're talking about. For too long, we really don't have a, what I call a name for this area that everyone immediately knows what you're talking about. It's been a challenge for us doing the process here as well. And hopefully, by going through a placemaking process, we'll be able to help define this innovation district in a way that's really in a positive way for the community.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. Just keep in mind some well-used terms like meaningful community engagement, what that means to you guys may be different than what's in the community, collaborative problem-solving and collective impact, you know, all that goes hand-in-hand when you're trying to do something just to scale in this manner, and particularly making sure it's a grassroots effort with all voices at the table to ensure we get great citizen input and not just developers and investors.
Oh, yeah. And we certainly appreciate those comments and any suggestions for helping us do that. We're open for.
And secondly, quickly here, you know, Form-Based Code was the thing de jour, you know, a few years ago, you know, that they were supposed to do everything in terms of allowing cities to advance. Now, you guys are removing the protections and barriers afforded by, as well as the advantages of a Form-Based Code, based on making development easier. What, are citizens being exposed or anything like that because we are removing these codes? Are we lowering barriers in any manner? Are we lowering, are we making communities more vulnerable? I'm just asking the question, you know, what is the impact?
No, that's a great question. Let me start off with the beginning and make it clear. The direction to change the zoning from Form-Based Code was directed by City Council based on complaints and comments they were receiving from people within the district. This is not a staff-initiated process. This really started at City Council. Quite frankly, the complaints and concerns City Council was hearing about the Form-Based Code in this district was one of the drivers behind them, asking us to go back and rewrite the entire zoning ordinance from similar kind of concerns, not quite to the level in the Form-Based Code. This Form-Based Code, quite frankly, has a number of problems, a lot of it in the way it was originally structured. And I won't get into all the details on that, be glad to talk to you, you know, offline a little bit more about that, but it just wasn't structured properly. And what was happening is, the level of what we call prescriptive standard, you know, there was no flexibility on the part of the property owner or the developer to do something much different than what had been adopted in that Form-Based Code was causing people to not be able to either use their existing property or to have any redevelopment options, building additions, you name it. The Form-Based Code was becoming just a barrier because of the designs, the high level of design standard, and quite frankly, the intensity and density of minimum levels of development that people had to do. And so, over and over and over again, people are going to City Council saying, I'm trying to, you know, we're coming out of a recession, the 2008 recession, when all this was being worked on, and we got into that decade of 2010, and people are trying to recover from the recession and finding out that they're getting roadblocks. And because some of these businesses have been vacant, as Julie Chop was mentioning, have been vacant for so long, they were running into our nonconforming regulations, would basically tell you, you can't use your property anymore unless you tear things down and start over. So I think there was a lot of harm being done with what Council was hearing about with the Form-Based Code as it was structured. Does it put people at any level of risk? No, I think what it does is it provides a lot of opportunity. And based on this planning process and the Innovation Overlay District, the community will have a much better chance to determine what its standards need to be that are appropriate there, as opposed to them being, you know, pretty much thrust on you by a, you know, Form-Based Code design mandate. So as with anything, you change zoning, you know, land uses change. That's why we want people to look at the zoning districts that apply to individual parcels out there. But I don't think it makes people more vulnerable. I think what it does is it provides people a more clear path to what they can use their property for. And that, to me, is one of the primary goals of this project, is to make it clear to people what their options and opportunities are, rather than throwing, you know, roadblocks all over the place. And I can tell you, on your question about Form-Based Code, they're still being used in other places, I just tell you that I don't think the way it was executed here was really appropriately done, and I think it's partially led to the problems we're having.
Thank you, Gary, for your comments. Thank you, Bob. Mr. Vaughn, do you have any comments or questions that you would like to add?
Sure. First of all, thank you guys for giving an update on what's going on in this particular district. I'm just kind of not concerned, but I just have some questions. And I think they were kind of answered previously on kind of why you guys were looking to, to change, change the zoning. And it sounds like it was a, you know, a task from council. And I think it, it appears to be appropriate. I, I was just curious if you guys could explain a little bit more about the general mixed use versus the neighborhood mixed use and, and how you identify which areas are going to be which?
So, as Julie mentioned, there was a study done that kind of looked at all the different, the various corridors. You know, the neighborhood mixed use as the, as the name might, you know, tell you is basically for smaller scale, lower intensity, you know, developments that fit more in with, you know, the immediate surrounding neighborhood as opposed to general mixed use, which is your larger, you know, retail-type business developments, offices, institutions and stuff like that, that would be, you know, would draw people from it, from a larger area. So if you look at the map and Julie's got it showing up there, we've got the London Boulevard corridor being the general mixed use corridor. And then kind of the central core, the High Street corridor and, and going down into the County Street corridor, having that be lower intensity, you know, in, in the types of uses that, that would go into that, just to kind of have a step down. Because, you know, we know that London Boulevard is a lot more vehicle-centric, you know, corridor already. You've got some, a lot of your drive-through, you know, fast food restaurants and larger grocery stores and that sort of thing. So that fits with that corridor being more, you know, auto-centric. And then it's kind of, you know, I tell people it's like Cinderella, right? So our, you know, Goldilocks, as you step down, as you get, you know, it's more intense, less intense, and then really more less intense as you get down to the County Street corridor. So that's kind of the intention is to have these corridors kind of in decreasing intensity, you know, and, and again, the enemy is going to be those smaller-scale residential, commercial type developments that'll be in that area. And again, residential's allowed in both of them. But the idea is that your more intensive commercial uses, as is already sort of there in that London Boulevard corridor, would be along London and, you know, step down in intensity as you get further down. Until you get obviously to the industrial corridor. And a lot of those industrial areas are already heavily industrial, you know, already. So again, that's, you know, that, you didn't really ask that part of the question, but, you know, that's, that's how those areas were selected. If you look at what's in those areas now, they're already very industrial, you know, in, in those areas already.
If I could jump in one more time real quick, I just mentioned one of those things we talked about having, you know, community engagement and looking at these corridors. One of these we're, we're already starting to see, we had this happen at the last planning commission meeting. We've got, we had some use permit applications out there across from the Kroger marketplace over at Seaboard Square. And, and we're already starting to see some of these restaurants starting to adapt themselves because of COVID-19. And so one of the other issues we've had is some of these quarters that at the time were, were trying to be, you know, less car-centric. I'll, I'll describe it, more pedestrian, bike-friendly, and we certainly support that. But we're seeing a lot of the businesses out there now becoming more about curbside pickup, drive-through pickup, you know, touchless stuff. And so, not knowing how long the, the implications of this COVID-19 are going to last, I think we're going to, we don't want to get into a situation where we go, you know, year after year unable to host any new development because we're not kind of keeping up with the, what's in the markets. What'll be interesting with the community is trying to determine, you know, exactly what level of, for example, of automobile-centric businesses is, is appropriate. And if you're not going to have them, what does that mean in terms of other businesses maybe saying, well, if I can't have that, I'm not, I'm not going to come at all. So it's, these are some good land use challenges that we're going to be facing, just like we did a decade ago, you know, when you had the impact of the recession and, and what was going on with businesses. But this is a totally different thing. So for the first time, for example, I think it was Chipotle saying they have what looks like a drive-through, but it's not a drive-through, it's a pickup window, you know, things of that nature. So, it's been an interesting kind of land use dynamics, some exciting sort of new, new things. We're just trying to make sure we don't get too far out there without making sure it's the right kind of mixture of things for the community. And really it's up to the community to help guide, you know, what level of that type of activity is going to be appropriate there.
So can these zoning regulations kind of encourage the walkability that we have downtown?
Exactly. You heard, early you might have heard Carl Jackson, was, is sitting in the meeting here. Carl's our transportation planning manager. He just finished our bike and ped plan. In fact, it's getting ready to go through the public hearing process, hopefully in the near future for adoption. We're very committed, you know, Portsmouth is a bicycle and pedestrian-friendly city. We've been trying to build on our capacity to be like that. And so, you know, the key is really to, to have a good plan for it and to not do it sort of, you know, haphazardly. One of the things about innovation districts that they will all tell you, they're built on, you know, community engagement with each other, you know, both at the very personal level, you know, what's the guy next door doing? What's the shop across the street doing? Can we walk down to get a coffee or a sandwich somewhere? All of those kinds of things are really, innovation districts are really built on a lot of that sort of mixing. And most of that is not in cars. Most of that's, you know, built to be walkable, bike-ridable, scooter ride, you know, whatever the case may be. So, so yes, that would be something would be an integral part of this process was to look at how people are going to move around within the district, both from outside and from inside.
Okay. And the last thing I was going to ask is, you know, because I, you know, serve on the, the downtown design committee. And I was just curious if a district like this would also have some type of design regulations or, or not?
Well, I don't want to get too far into legalese issues here. If you look at the state code and what our authority is, or it's a, and state enabling legislation for zoning is a property owner favoring a set of regulations. And I'm not objecting, I'm just pointing that out as a thing. And we have very limited ability to impose a lot of design standards outside of historic districts. As you probably know, the DDC, despite people appreciating the way it's set up, it really is tied back to the state's authority as a historic district. That DDC area is regulated like it's a historic district. It's under the same state code. So, I think under the overlay, I think under the overlay district, we're going to try to do what we can to have appropriate design standards as far as we can, especially on new commercial uses. They won't be nearly as prescriptive as you might get as we talk, the way the form-based code was in some cases in a, in a historic district. But we certainly want to get to a level of standard so the community gets quality development. You know, if we're going to have new development, we want to be quality new development. And so we'll have to work to find out what's that level of design standard that's both going to be determined to be legal. And, and that's also going to be not, not a barrier to somebody coming in or everyone not coming, I'd say.
Right.
Everyone coming in, but you don't want to block everyone from coming in.
Understood, understood.
That's really the balance you try to shoot for, to get the right kind of development in the right place.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ian. Ms. Barnett, did you have questions or comments you wanted to add?
I did.
Could you speak up just a little bit? We're having a hard time hearing you.
All right. Yes, can you hear me better now? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. I, yes, I inherited a property on London Boulevard, 1017 London Boulevard. And for decades, we've been trying to figure out parking there. And I just wanted to know what the implications are for that area there. We're between the two hotels. I have no idea how that happened. My mom and my aunt lived there for almost their entire lives when we got the property. Between two hotels and absolutely nowhere to park, either across the street or either across the street. And we were at the mercy of the hotel owner to allow us to park there. And he did not allow us park or even rent faces. So, we, we've made the best of it. We moved my elderly aunt out of there. She was there for many years, but it was too much for her to have to walk across the street.
I'll take, I'll take that one again. It's great, another great question, question about parking. As many of you may or may not know, when the zoning ordinance was adopted in 2010, parking requirements downtown were eliminated with the assumption you were either going to park in a garage or, you know, on street. And then, then as you crossed over into, and we'll just use a general boundary, it's not exact boundaries, you can tell by looking at the map, when you cross Effingham heading west, you start getting into where parking requirements start to apply. And, and as you can imagine, right off the bat, when you cross over on High Street, you've got a number of businesses in there that were built just like they're downtown. There's no land area around them, there's no place to park. And, and we, we tried quite a bit to figure out what's the best way to do that. What I would suggest to you, part of what we'll look at, we're doing this planning process after the zoning goes into effect, is to be able to look at parking strategies within the district. Whether that's where the city ought to come in and build a parking lot or a parking structure or, or shared parking where someone else can provide parking. But, you know, one of the, one of the, the tricks you have in, in converting some of these existing lots and existing uses is, is providing a parking. And, and that's really a two-part thing. Part of the parking is how much do you need? And the second part of that question is how much would the city be making you provide? I think you understand that, that whole challenge there where we have a, you know, a minimum parking requirement and maybe you can or can't provide any. So that is one of those things we'd want to look at in this planning process for the innovation district. Part of what we need to do is figure out how do we handle parking requirements in a way that is not going to keep someone from being able to develop, but recognizing, you know, there's some physical limitations as you're describing with what you can do on your particular piece of property. So, best I can say is, you know, there will be parking requirements out there, but we would also want to use this innovation district planning process in that overlay district to create sort of customized parking where we need it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Wren, do you have some questions or comments you would like to add to the meeting? Michelle Wren? All right, going on to the next, Mr. G, OK, G.
Good evening. Great job on the presentation, Julie. I did have a couple of brief questions. The first one being, I know one of the points of contention was homeowners and business owners that were put out of code with the formation of the D2. Has that same analysis been done for the innovation overlay to see how many people it would cause to be out of code?
Let me, let me answer this way, you know, the, you really got a, you've really got a multitude of issues in there now. You know, the, when the form-based code was adopted, pretty much everybody became non-conforming. Certainly most of the buildings in there don't meet anything, have nothing to do with the design program of the form-based code. And, and that I think, you know, back to what both Meg and Julie were describing, became one of, one of the property owners' primary complaints to council that they're pretty much being trapped. They got a building and can't use it, can't modify it, it's not set back in the right place, it's not, parking's not in the right place. You pick it, we had some reason in our code to tell you couldn't, you couldn't do whatever it is you were trying to do. So, what I tell you is we didn't do what I call an analysis, like how many parcels are non-conforming. I'll tell you a couple of things. You're going to have a challenge on anything in this district because before it became form-based code, all the setbacks were, were pretty much applied by the down, what was it, those days, the, you know, the D2 Downtown Design Committee. When this whole area of all of downtown and D2 were under the control of a design committee, the zoning gave them free rein on setting up building setbacks and things of that nature. So, you'll find that there's, as you, as I'm sure all of you know, looking around, there the setbacks move all over the place and very difficult to come up with a unified sort of setback. So what we've done in the proposals, we created what we consider to be a reasonable going-forward setback. And then as, as been described, we built in processes into the zoning ordinance, which are not typical, but we built in where you find yourself in a non-conforming situation, whether it's the use or the building structure or something of that nature. We've created a process, rather than we just tell you too bad, the code wants you to tear it down and start over, which is what current form-based code and the current zoning ordinance would tell you to do. We give you an opportunity to go in and, and apply to modify a non-conforming structure or expand a non-conforming use. What we try to do is say, we're going to accept what's there because we're not trying to put everybody out of business, you know, and we know that this is not, when you change the zoning like this, just like with the form-based code, you don't expect to flip into something completely different in, you know, a week or a month or a year. This is sort of setting yourself on the long-term path for generations of how you want your community to be, or this community, you know, to be developed. And so, what we try to do is minimize the number of non-conformities the best we can and then create process where people who happen to be non-conforming now and might be non-conforming later, do have a way to request relief, which you can't do right now. Or you really don't have as much of an opportunity. Certainly, most ordinances do not want you to expand a non-conforming use, but, but for this district, for example, you'd have the ability to request that. Because you just have, because of the way the old zoning was, I'm going to go back to that pre-form-based code zoning. If you ever look at one of the old zoning maps, it's just a checkerboard of light industrial here and some mixed use there and some residential here and not a whole lot of rhyme or reason to it. I think that's what's really held the community back because it's been hard to get a, a sense of where things are supposed to, you know, to go, to make some sort of development sense. So we've hopefully are creating and then will continue to create a regulatory program that, that helps people to use their property in a, in a positive fashion, other than perpetually running into, you know, walls here and there that they can't get any relief from. The one thing that, that we've been stressing in our zoning ordinance rewrite is to stop creating dead ends. You know, where people run into something, whoops, whoops, just too bad for you, that's the end of the line. Try to eliminate those as much as we can to create opportunities for people to request some alternatives or some relief or some, you know, development alternatives. Hope that answers your question.
Definitely. And one other quick question, are there any other local examples or higher-profile examples of an innovation district in use?
There's a number of them. We'd be glad to post some. I think we may have one even on our web page is one. I know that one that I like, where was I, down in Florida, it's like, I don't know, it was Jacksonville or somewhere, but there's a number of them. A lot of them, they're all over the board, you know, depending on the community. One thing I like about innovation districts is they, you kind of customize them to your community. So, for example, if you were in a community that had a major university, you'll see that. Like I've got MIT over here, I've got, you know, Harvard or something, you know? And then I build an innovation district adjacent to the university, take, take advantage of what's going on at the university. You see some of my locate when there's a major corporation, you know, like maybe you've got a big, something like Google or, or Apple or, or Microsoft, and you might build something around there. But more, more than that, you'll see a lot of smaller communities that are just trying to take advantage of being innovative, want to be creative, something different and work within the assets. And I think Julie did a good job there, kind of going through all the assets this community has, it lends itself to a lot of those things we would consider innovative, both in some of the city councils been after. I know Planning Commissioner Youngblood's been, you know, talking about for a long time this access to high-speed internet. We know we've got businesses in town that, that do a lot of work with the Department of Defense, you know, potential for doing work with the Port Authority, whatever. So I think you've got the ability to kind of create your own customized innovation district here, but we certainly have examples of others we can share. And we'll post some on our, on the planning department webpage and take a look at them.
Ian, I see your hand raised, but I'm going to keep going down through the list and we'll come back to you if that's okay. Randy Mouse Moss, do you have comments or questions you'd like to add?
Yes, just, I'm a property owner on London Boulevard and wondering, does, does this have effect on existing places that are, businesses that are already there?
Well, I'll say the first thing depends on, you know, Well, I'll say the first thing depends on, I'll answer your question in a simple, yes. I mean, any zoning has an effect on anything that's existing because every, every parcel in the city's got some zoning applied to it. What I think you're most likely going to find is that most of the businesses on, on London are going to become conforming uses under the new zoning. A lot of those with the drive-throughs. For example, the form-based code did not allow, does not allow drive-throughs. That became an issue on London Boulevard for us because, as you can imagine, that corridor's got, you know, McDonald's and KFC. Wendy's was trying to get in. We, we lost a cookout, tried to get in, they couldn't get, get through the, through the zoning process for a cookout. So, and as I was mentioning before, you know, we've got a lot of auto, and Meg mentioned, I believe, the shopping centers. So, most of that by getting into that GMU district, that's the city's, you know, most intensive commercial zoning district. So, I think it's probably going to help people in the, in the GMU district. You may find a few issues out there with, you know, setbacks or things if you try to do something different. That's what we're talking about if you, if it turned out to be the case. And, and this is going to be an individual, you know, determination by each parcel, each property. There's, there's ability to go through, get some relief from anything that's made non-conforming by the zoning code change. But my general, my general observation is that going to the GMU is going to, is going to help a great deal on those properties on London, probably more than, than any other properties in the district.
Okay, thank you.
And if you're in on the meeting, I posted Julie and my email addresses and our phone number in addition to the website address. So, please feel free to reach out to us with any specific questions that anybody has. It's directed to anybody on the call, any specific questions you might have about your individual properties. We'll be happy to walk you through what, you know, what the impacts might be and what, you know, what your property is zoned, what, you know, it's proposed to be zoned. If you're not sure, we can help you walk through that. Raymond Moore, do you have comments or questions that you want to add to the conversation?
First of all, thank you very much for putting this on. It's been enlightening. We've been kind of a, a little bit of a business that has stuck ourselves in where we had the zoning in the very beginning when we bought the buildings of Light Industrial. And then, there was a change back in 2010. And we went through rezoning and requested to be put back in Light Industrial or I can't remember the other designation they gave us. My question is, we're up against the Oak Grove Cemetery on the dead end of Godwin Street. It appears on this map before me now on the screen that that is still zoned Light Industrial. Good. My question would be, when I sell my business, because I have a, a deal within the making right now of selling my business, I've been doing this, you know, 20-some years and I want to retire. The gentleman wants to buy the buildings and, and continue the business here. Is there going to be a problem with someone buying the business and keeping the zoning that's been on these buildings and then rezoned again after we went through rezoning? Is that going to present a issue?
I would tell you no. I mean, in fact, your, your properties are one of the first ones that started to point out this issue with the form-based code. I'm sure you remember all that pain and, and challenges with, they're trying to figure out how to fit those, those industrial buildings into what, you know, the form-based code wasn't quite designed to deal with. But the zoning was changed, the zoning is permanent, it goes with the land. It doesn't change based on transfer. So, the zoning you have there today is the zoning we would be leaving on for you. If city council were to adopt this map today, your zoning would not change.
Okay, thank you. Hallelujah.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We've got Robert Johnson. Do you have any questions or comments for the meeting? Robert Johnson. Ms. Thaxton, do you have any questions or comments?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Thank you. We got Zachary Robinson. Any questions or comments? There you go.
No comments. Thank you, though.
Okay, we'll go back to Ian. Ian, what you got?
Yeah, a question popped up when the gentleman was asking about examples and I'm glad that. But I guess my question was more, do the local universities have, have any of them been a part of this conversation? Or will they be when the community engagement starts on potential partnerships and trying to get this area up and moving?
Yeah, they haven't been. As Julie said, you know, we are just at the very, very beginning of this. But, you know, I would imagine that we would anticipate that, you know, we, we have, Portsmouth has great partnerships with lots of local academic establishments, which is awesome. They want to help us all the time, which is great. We take help like that. So, I would imagine that, you know, as Bob said, as Julie said, we want this to be a collaborative process. This is not about what we think. And, and we like to utilize those, those expertise that they have. You know, certainly, all of them have got different ones, even as far as even Hampton University has got some, some things that they've helped us with in the past. So, I would imagine that, yeah, we would want to reach out to all of those partners.
Yeah, and that's, that's really part of the whole, the whole thing with the innovation district. The people that can help for you or, or help create opportunities for innovation. That's why we mentioned, you know, for those of you who are following what's going on with the offshore wind, you know, it's become a big Virginia initiative. And you may or may not be aware that the Port Authority has signed a contract with a, with a firm to use the Portsmouth Marine Terminal. I think they signed maybe a 10-year lease, one of the largest offshore wind and energy companies in the world going to be over there. And it's really unknown yet how far Virginia's going to go in, in taking advantage. I'm just using wind energy as an example, being innovative. But here, we're going to have the best port for, for, you know, moving these kind of things out to the, out to the Atlantic for doing that. They're going to have to be constructed, assembled, designed. There's a long-term commitment to alternative energy. You know, we think because of our close proximity, this district in particular, close proximity to all of that, potential opportunities, that's the kind of stuff we're looking at. So, we'd want to be reaching out to all of those and, and more. You know, any, anybody who's out there, we know we've got some, for example, DOD contractors that have expressed interest in being, you know, closer to downtown. And one of the, one of the drawbacks a lot of that is that lack of that high-speed internet service. That's one of the reasons the city council has been so aggressive in trying to get the city's fiber, fiber ring built. Because it's the one thing that a lot of these more high-tech companies need that, that we don't have available to them yet, but it's coming. We're, we're certainly, and this district's going to be a great beneficiary of that because it's going to come right to the district. So, so, yes, all those people out there and others, if people have other people they think would be good, you know, interested partners or players, or even people who just bring expertise to the, to the conversation, we'd want to bring in a, kind of an open-door policy for that. Because the goal is to be, is to be, you know, inclusive and innovative, you know, not exclusive and sort of locked down. So, we're going to try to reach out. And that's why this public engagement process will be pretty broadly open, but driven a lot from the people inside the district as to, you know, how they want to live and work and, and, and that type of thing. But the innovators are out there, we just got to get them aware. And, and I did mention too, and I think that was in Julie's presentation, the, the working on that plan's not just the planning department, kind of a land use thing. You know, we're doing this in partnership with the city's economic development department. And so, you know, with the, with the contacts and the businesses they deal with and their potential to reach out to others, their, their contacts within the state economic development system that this district can hopefully take advantage of.
Great. Don't they have like an app or something to economic development that kind of identifies properties?
Yeah, I don't know that they do.
Okay.
Can't remember off, but yes, they do. They have, they have, that was developed maybe a year, year and a half ago, something like that, but yes, they do.
Good. Well, I just want to say thank you guys for hosting this. I think that was very informative and I look forward to seeing the progress. But, thank you.
Thank you, Ian. I'm just going to open up the floor one more time, just for anybody else that had any other questions or comments that they want to add. I'm going to let it be a free-for-all just for a couple seconds there. If you unmute yourself, we'll try and hopefully not let you, oh, we got Raymond Moore. Perfect, raise your hand, go ahead, Mr. Moore.
Thank you for taking my question. You know, with the new opportunity zones that the current presidential administration has put into place, have, has this area been designated such? Or do you know?
I'm going to tell you that I don't know. I know there was, there was some, there was a lot of discussion when they were setting up for the, the, the zones in the city as to whether or not they were the place where economic development wanted them set up. But that is one of those things, I don't know the exact answer. And I wouldn't want to tell you incorrect information.
Okay.
Taking notes, you may have noticed I'm taking notes. We can find out and then.
Yeah, we'll certainly let you know.
Well, a follow-on was, the hub zone designation for this corridor on London Boulevard, it excluded my side of London Boulevard and included the other side, which there's nothing there. So, I had a question as to what part does the city have, if possible, to getting us the hub zone designation on this side of London Boulevard? Because it, it would have a tremendously great effect on, on our ability to land contracts with the government, which is why the first place I bought the building, it, it was on the map for the state as a hub zone. And then, when I applied for a hub zone, they said, no, you're on the wrong side of the street.
Unusual. We will, we will certainly check with economic development and get you an answer to your question.
Okay, I'll just email Julie or Meg and, and, you know, put it formally to them. That way, they have something to track. But thank you.
That'd be perfect, thank you. Anybody else want to raise their hand or unmute themselves? Have any final questions or comments? It's been a great discussion. We certainly appreciate all of you taking time out of your evening. It's a lovely day, we should all just be outside instead of doing this inside. So, we appreciate that. As Bob and I think Julie both mentioned, we're going to continue to put information on the website. Julie's got it showing up there on the screen right now if you're looking at it. And also, our email addresses and our phone numbers, and I put them in the chat. And they are also on the website. So, please feel free to continue to check the website. We're, we're, this meeting is being recorded and our marketing folks are going to put it up on YouTube tomorrow and provide us a link so that we'll put that on our website as well, so that you can go back and be like, what did they talk about? What did they say? Or if other people want to watch it, we want to put it out there so that everybody can see what's going on. You know, we always talk about, and Bob said, you know, we want this to be a transparent process. We want, you know, there to be lots of communication. And so, we're trying to, even though we can't meet physically, which is, you know, what we do, we're trying to make, reach out in the best ways that we can with the limitations that we have. And thank you, Julie, for our awesome presentation. Thank you, Bob, for answering all of the questions in such detail. Anybody have any last-minute things, Bob or Julie, that you want to put in?
I'm just going to, I'm going to just echo your comments. I'd like to thank everyone for taking it. I hope this is worthwhile and useful part of your day. And we certainly are always in search of ways to reach out and contact and discuss issues with people out there. As, as I mentioned earlier, it's quite a challenge for us under these COVID-19 virtual restrictions. We're trying to find our best way to work around and through those. And I think these, maybe these kind of virtual, almost chat-type meetings, maybe this is a good way to go. Let us know if you, if this is helpful, if you have any suggestions of what we might be able to do going forward. Because we are, again, trying to improve our ways of, of communicating under, you know, challenging circumstances, to say the least. But we certainly appreciate the ability to talk to people somewhat face-to-face, certainly on the same platform. And again, thank you all for your, for your participation and your very thoughtful questions. And thank you, Julie and Meg.
All right, everyone, good night, be safe, go out there and enjoy the sunset.